I never do. Oh, I'm live. Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for whatever the date this is. I think it's the 21st of September. And we are live as well as on Zoom in accordance with several standing ordinances and Mass. General law chapters and so forth due to the pandemic, which had, we thought, almost gone away. Back a little bit. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with me and justice for all. So, before I go. Of course, people on their leisure on YouTube, they go over it again and again, right? And, but one thing, since we have somebody new monitoring the Zoom and the Zoom waiting room, it might not be a bad reminder for, I don't know if there's going to be anybody tonight, but that generally, if one wants to join in via Zoom, to please put your first and last name. And I don't know how many characters that you're allowed, but perhaps your street address. I know that I can do for Zoom for Court, my name, comma, and the matter name. So probably enough to be able to put your street name so that folks who don't necessarily know the cast of characters who usually arrive would be able to recognize that they are from the town or on the agenda and it's appropriate to let them into the meeting. And now, how about some COVID updates?
I'll keep it brief tonight. We continue to have new cases. This past week, we had 11 new cases, one less than the week before. We are up to 1,092, I believe. And while that's not great, we are on the low end of what's happening in our county. And the county overall seems to be lower than what's happening in the state. It's a comfort, but if you looked at the graph that's on our website, you'll notice that even though the Massachusetts numbers are going up, the Norfolk County number looked like it just started to go down in this past week. So we're hopeful for that. And there's some very good information on the website under the Board of Health about where to get shots and what the data means and how vaccination rates are going. So I would urge people to look at that.
Are there any changes in the vaccination percentages since last we met? It's trending outward, slowly steady, going down.
Much. The female vaccination rate, which is what we've been tracking, is just under 80%, leaving 20% of people who haven't been vaccinated. So the overview just encourages people to really consider that and hopefully go choose to get vaccinated. The percentage of males is much lower and the thought has been that because we believe, though we're double checking, the prisoners at Norfolk, at the Norfolk prison are of a lower percentage of people being vaccinated. That has thrown the overall male numbers lower than females.
Is it just the prison? Is that the only one? Or do we have any of the House of Corrections closed right now? Right. So is it just the prison that we're tracking?
I think so.
And the only reason I ask that is, right, because if you're held pending adjudication, you'd be in a House of Corrections, and that would be the folks that I would think would be less likely to have been vaccinated rather than a general prison population who might have been there. Dub tail to what I know is going to be Kevin's line of questioning. Anybody have any questions?
I mean, I'll just point out the fact that if you look at the demographic information, you know, we're extremely high as it pertains to those under the age of 19 and those over the age of 65. So you're really just looking at that 20 to 65 kind of age group where there could be that big dip or that valley in the number of those vaccinated. There is a little bit of a bump if you look at those who got their first shot. So that's a little promising, but it's only a small bump and doesn't explain the entire.
What's the bump, like a percentage point or two?
I think as a municipality, we're somewhere around 64% vaccinated. If you look at, if you add in those who have one shot, that goes a closer to 10%.
That's not too bad. One thing that I think is interesting when you were saying that it's below 20 and above 65 is higher. The folks below 20 are, aren't, I think, su espanti deciding to go toddle them down to get vaccinated. They're being at least facilitated by a parent, right, urged by people who would be in that sort of dip space. It's just interesting. Thank you. Anything else? Nope. Well, I guess we're to the public comment section. Any public comments? Not signaling anybody out, but looking right at you, Ernie. Would you like to join us up at the microphone?
And I have been vaccinated.
Thank you, Mr. Alex.
As have we. Or as have I. I don't need to speak for anyone else. They're pretty sure.
Yes.
Yes.
No, the statements I'm going to be making, I'm not really going to be looking for an answer.
Well, you wouldn't be getting one anyway. So this is like a win-win sort of simpatico thing.
Bly usually gives me some answers during the week, but I'm going to wait till the next selectmen meeting and hope to get an answer for everybody at home so that they can get an answer too. I just want to get an explanation. We just hired people to do a feasibility study. Now, the second group had just done a fire station where they had to have temporary housing. And they stated a price between $500,000 and $700,000 for temporary housing. That's a lot of money. When the housing is all done, the tents are taken down, we get zero to show for it. So that's wasted money. I'm still pushing for 8284 North Street, which to the people at home, that is where Bremelus's greenhouses used to be. That is 6.35 acres of fairly prime land. Approximately two acres of it is wet or flamed. The existing fire station is on 1.5 acres. They are adding on to it the lot next door that they got from the Federated Church. It's listed as an unbuildable lot. The and that's of 1.12 acres, a total of 2.6 and change, almost 2.7 acres. The price for the property at North Street is a little under $500,000. Temporary fire stuff is $500,000 to $700,000. So can you see a point there? We also could sell off two of the acres of Bremelus property. The Conservation Commission or CPC could pick it up. This would open up between 500 and 600 feet of shore access to the public. Mill Pond, a buccet, Mill Pond used to be part of the estate that that became our park down there that is owned by the state, the Audubon Society. The woman that owned it sold it to the Bremelus family in the early 30s. They paid.
32nd.
Okay. It would be better working conditions for the firefighters and it will be access for the town to get to 500 to 600 feet of shore access where we could use the land and they have three houses planned for it right now. That would be basically six more kids going to school or nine more kids. Actually, we would get aware on that. Somehow we should utilize that property. And I'd like to know why. I'm going to use a little of my last time. I didn't use up all of my time. Why, why we can't even have our feasibility study people put that in as a part of their feasibility study? Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else? Public comment? Is there anybody waving, anybody that I don't, is there anybody other than the three people that I can see on the, I guess there's really only two people that I can see.
And they're here, they're going to be joining us for the conversation about the ADA report.
I was just more, I remember, I remembered, I remembered, I remembered that there was a time where I was joking around with Kevin when he was running it, that we had like a total of one viewer and Kevin was able to see that there were actually more. So I think that whatever this shows doesn't necessarily track what Amanda has. I was just curious. Perhaps a larger section of our viewing audience before the kneel sinks. Huh?
It is reflecting.
I think previously we had it with just the person who was talking was speaking could be seen. And now we have the tile view where you can see everybody in the room.
All right. So if we, if we, if we increased our audience, we'd know it. All right. Well, okay. Onward. Light, do you want to take us through tonight's agenda?
Sure. So the next item is to consider appointments to various boards and commissions, which is some conservation commission, commission appointments, then approval of the policy for disposal of surplus tangible property, to vote the intent to lay out two streets for the special town meeting on November 9th. And after that, we've got some discussion items, which we're leading off with a review of the draft ADA self evaluation and transition report, discuss the board's goals and objectives, to review the special town meeting warrant, town administrator updates, approve five warrants and a one set of minutes.
Thank you. So I guess on to agenda item number three.
So we do have two interested applicants for the two open positions on the Conservation Commission. We've been for a while and good things come to those who wait. We have two applications, one from Maggie Crowe, who's joined us here in the audience, and one from Adam Sutcher, who I don't know that he's able to come tonight. The Conservation Commission hasn't met since we got these applications, but staff went and informally individually reached out to them. And I think one or two members have spoken to the two candidates. And the word we got back is we would love to have them appointed. So Maggie graciously came tonight in case you'd like to talk and discuss that, her appointment with her. And we would recommend appointments of both.
So, well, other than the inevitable observation that thank goodness, people are interested in joining and helping, I don't have any questions. I know we'd love to hear a little bit more about you if you want to offer that up, but I will defer to my co-select people to see if they have any questions first.
No, we would love to meet you and know a little bit about you, but no, I don't have any specific questions. I'm excited that you've come forward.
I mean, you're already here. If you wouldn't mind just coming up to one of the mics and talking about, yeah, your interest in CONCOM?
No.
Oh, no, 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 you're good.
You're on the.
You did very well. The timer was.
You're on the agenda. So you can go for.
Okay. Hi, everybody. So my name's Maggie. I just moved to Norfolk. My boyfriend's from Foxborough and I'm from Lowell. So we just bought our first house on Myrtle Street. We love it. We're very excited. We got a puppy right away. So we're very busy. I don't have any background in like environmental science per se. I mean, like I took a course in college, but I got a master's in communications two years ago. And then I started doing a master's in public policy. So I'm working in logistics right now for the Air Force. So I'm kind of like doing a lot of things, but I joined the Facebook group and I saw, I don't remember who posted the original, like, hey, the Conservation Committee is looking for new members, if anybody is interested. And I just followed up on that and our, our house backs on to conservation land. So I was like, oh, I should probably be involved and do something like that. So that's how I got here.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much for volunteering. And it's so great for our town to have public participation and we're excited to have you on board.
Thanks for having me.
Congratulations on your first home.
Thanks.
And the puppy.
And the puppy.
It would have totally been okay to bring the puppy, by the way.
She's a little noisy.
There's a, there's a lot of people who are really noisy in here. So it's, she'll fit. She'll fit right in. So now what do we?
I would suggest you vote to a.
Do I have a motion?
You want to go? I'll go. I moved.
He's not in the right place.
I moved that the board vote to appoint two persons to the Conservation Commission, Maggie Crowe for a term expiring June 30th, 2024, and Adam Suter for a term expiring June 30th, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, number four.
Yes. So the next item, the town is by required to have a policy on how it disposes of, of, I can't talk tonight.
Say that again.
Let me start again. Have a policy on how it's going to dispose of surplus tangible property. Can't explain why the law rounds since the early 90s and we don't have one, but here we are correcting that. And so I've included in your packet a draft policy that Finance has put together along with a copy of the state law, the chapter 30B on this. And it basically says that you need to follow the chapter 30B law. And for anything you want to get rid of, you need to let the chief procurement officer know, which would be moi. And, you know, tell us why you don't need it anymore, what you think it's worth, give us information about that so that we can figure out how to dispose of it correctly. I can tell you that internally, we generally will offer things to other departments first. For instance, the library has some, what I think are some nice tables and chairs that they don't need anymore. They're often to other departments and maybe we can use them somewhere else first. But if not, we typically use a auction website. It's popular in the local government arena. And we sell everything from trucks to tables and chairs and, and you name it when that comes up. If it's something above $10,000, the state's pretty clear about how you have to dispose of it. And it also goes into what you do when it's real property. That's a whole nother set of rules. So I think it's pretty straightforward and I would recommend approval and happy to answer any questions.
You sort of answered the only question that I had had. I'd read the language. It makes sense. And I know periodically I, I opine to a kinder, gentler time when I lived in a town that the dump had swap, because that was my favorite part about living in that town was the dump had a swap. And so that, of course, leads me, I understand this is stuff with value that you can sell, but then I noted the disposal of surplus having no reseller salvage value and just seemed like an opportunity to talk about how great it was to have a swap area at the dump. Story for another day, but I just wanted to chime in about it. But what was, what's the kind of, other than a table or a chair, what do you see as the kinds of tangible supply that is no longer used? What's it common that people would see in this town, either just because it's interesting or because we can make money off of it?
It's generally equipment like surplus vehicles that have outlived a useful life with us. Police cars, when they've finally done and can't be roadworthy for a police car anymore, sell those sorts of things, but.
Tasers?
Probably.
Joking. I'm joking.
Probably a trade-in.
Remember the Tate, like we heard a whole thing about the tasers. We're about to get traded. We're going to rent tasers.
I think we did, we did trade those in.
We did. Yes. No, things like weapons, no. But I mean, I've used it in other towns. We were, when we were renovating our town hall, we need to get rid of everything from antique typewriters to file cabinets to you name it. And you, it's amazing what you can sell of, because we want to get it back as much as we can for the town for, for whatever we're going to need next. So I say we'll try to take care of it internally and share it to someone else who could use it before we can. Some things don't have any value to sell. They, they're a computer that's gone defunct or something like that. We're not going to try and sell those things. But we also need to keep track of what we're selling because we have a fixed assets list of things that the town owns that we need to keep track of and be able to report with our audit of what we own and what its value is. So that's another reason for doing this, that we can, okay, we bought a vehicle and we disposed of a vehicle and that list, this helps us keep that accurate.
Do you update the list if you discover items that would qualify as tangible surplus that aren't already on your list? Like say somebody, you, things in the old town hall, you just said the old typewriters, that type of thing. Do you then update the initial list of what we have and then write it off?
I'm going to need to double check with Finance to exactly sure what's on the list beyond.
I just was curious about the, how granular the detail is.
I'm not sure we get down to every chair and every desk, but I'm sure we keep track of more significant purchases. I just need to double check.
So I don't have any other questions?
There is a wall at the transfer station where you can leave things. And there is kind of an informal swap wall at the transfer station.
Good to know.
Right there. We once left a rather hideous lamp. My husband loved it and we left it because I won. And by the time we were done, somebody had picked it up. Somebody picked it up. So there isn't informal swap area. Yes.
Many, many household items that you're able to easily fix one.
And we can sell a membership to the transfer station.
A membership to the transfer station.
That's right. I do. Yep. It's time to get my act together. Time to get my, my memberships in order. Kevin?
I don't think it's the case, but just to make sure, we're doing this preemptively. We didn't see somebody throw a cruiser on eBay or Facebook Marketplace or anything.
Such a great question. I wish I had thought of that.
No, but we had a department say, hey, aren't we supposed to have a policy on this? And we went, you're right, we're supposed to have a policy. So let's, let's get that done and dusted.
I thought I saw Mr. Alex pull up in a cruiser. Just want to make sure that wasn't the case.
He's going to have to, he's going to have to buy it and be the highest bidder.
All right. So any other questions, comments? Do, do I have any motions? Is this a motion thing? I keep flipping. It is a motion.
There we go. I move that the board vote to adopt a policy on the disposal of surplus tangible property.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item number five. Light?
Agenda item number five is one that will look familiar because we did this in the spring. For Frederickson Road extension, Oakview Trail extension, the board did vote these motions, albeit with different dates in the spring because we had anticipated that developer would be completed with the project and be ready to have them accepted at town meeting. That didn't come to fruition. So we're having a do-over by voting these again, refer back to the planning board so they can, so then we can have a public hearing in late October and get them on the, on the warrant for a special town meeting. In your packet, we got, since it came, it went out to you last Thursday, the acceptance plans. So that is a big step forward from what we had in the spring. And we expect to be able to get the deeds from this developer as well before town meeting. So there are two, as they were before, rather long motions that need to be read. And if the board approves those, then we will forward these to the planning board and ask them to provide us with their report that they agree these streets are ready to be accepted.
All right. I have no questions. Any questions?
Nope.
Kevin?
None.
I would point out, I spelled Frederickson wrong. It only has one E, not two. The motions that I will sign are correct and the warrant is correct. So my apologies.
Thank you. I'll do the first one. Is that okay? I move that the board vote on its own initiative and based on the recommendation of the Department of Public Works Superintendent Blair Crane and Town Planner Richard J. McCarthy, it intends to lay out a town way at Oakview Trail Extension. It is the opinion of the select board that the common convenience and necessity require the laying out of a town way at this location. In order to comply with the provisions of chapter 82 of the Massachusetts General Law and to provide a full and proper public discourse on this matter, the select board has also voted, has also voted that notice of this intention be served upon the owners of the lands that will be acquired for this purchase and on abutters thereto. This notice shall state the intentions of the select board and announce that the select board will meet on October 19th, 2021 in accordance with the governor's office, governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, section 20, relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency. This public meeting may be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Alternative public access to this meeting would be done via Zoom online video conferencing. To hear all persons interested, to hear all persons interested in the meeting, interested in laying out of this town way, please check posted meeting agenda for meeting location details. Further, the select board voted in accordance with chapter 82 of the Massachusetts General Laws to forward Oakview Trail Extension to the Norfolk Planning Board for a recommendation on street acceptance.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I move that the board vote on its to, I vote, let's try that one more time.
Not a good night.
I move that the board vote to on its own initiative and based upon the recommendation of the Department of Public Works Superintendent Blair Crane and Town Planner Richard J. McCarthy, it intends to lay out a town way at Frederickson Road Extension 250, 580. It is the opinion of the select board that common convenience and necessity require the laying out of the town way at this location. In order to comply with the provisions of chapter 82 of the Massachusetts General Laws and to provide for a full and proper public discourse on this matter, the select board has also voted that notice of this intention be served upon the owners of the lands that will be acquired for this purpose and on abutters thereto. This notice shall state the intentions of the select board and that the select board will meet on October 19th, 2021. And in accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, chapter 30A subsection 20 relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency. This public meeting may be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Alternative public access to this meeting would be done via Zoom online video conferencing. To hear all persons interested, I got messed up in the same part, in the laying out of this town way. Please check posted meeting agenda for meeting location details. Further, the select board voted in accordance with chapter 82 of the Massachusetts General Laws to forward Frederickson Road Extension to the Norfolk Planning Board for a recommendation on street acceptance.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Article or agenda item, forgive me, number six. Still talk like a moderator.
So our item number six is a discussion item to review the draft ADA self evaluation and transition plan report, which looks like this. Yes, please. So joining us tonight is, obviously is Scott, who's taken the lead on this project, along with Jack Madden, who you'll see on the screen. Jack is with Beta Engineering, the firm that the town contracted with to do this work. So just by background, we are required to have such a plan. And we have done some work on this way back on, on recreational facilities, but not on actual buildings. So Scott took the initiative to apply for a grant last fall from the state for 30. So Scott took the initiative to apply for a grant last fall from the state for $32,000 and that has been what we've used to pay to have this work done. So Beta undertook a project to go around to all of our buildings and painstakingly review everything about them that was ADA applicable and come up with a report. This is volume one. Volume two is about 500 pages.
I was glad.
Of all of the things that they found. And so that sounds like a lot and the total value of those things is about $1.8 million the way they priced it out. What I would say to you is that sounds scary and I want to try to, what we're gonna try and do now is help put it into context and what we do about it. They looked very specifically at the law says the handrail needs to be exactly this long and it's not exactly that long, or the ramp is at the wrong pitch, or the door. All those got noted down and that is correct. However, I think it's important to understand that with the exception of the police station, all of our buildings were built before 2012 and actually have to follow a standard from 1991. And so while they're technically maybe not all correct, I think the question often comes, well, do we have to start seeing them all immediately? And the answer is not necessarily yes. We do need to, now that we have this done, once it gets accepted by the board in about a month after this public comment period, we will be able to take that and help it to work towards getting in compliance, whether it's simple things like correcting the width of handicap parking spaces and signage at, and say in front of Olive Day, or making adjustments in how we deliver a program to when we replace or renovate the fire station, we'll take care of all those things then. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Jack, who has led this work on our behalf. And maybe you can go, Jack, a little bit more into the priority order that's in here, which helps inform us how we go about taking care of these corrections? Don't we have, you're on mute.
Good evening. I'm Jack Madden. I'm a professional engineer and a project manager at Beta Group. And as Blythe mentioned, we were brought on by the town to conduct a self-evaluation and transition plan for facilities, which was connected to a contract that also included the pedestrian facilities within the right-of-way. That is my expertise. I'm a project manager that has expertise in asset management, GIS-based asset management. And so we hired a subconsultant to help us with the architectural evaluation of your facilities. They did a really nice job. And I will say that, as Blythe mentioned, the town took this on as a voluntary measure, although it is a requirement of the Americans with Disabilities Act. It is typical that towns do not address this in a forthright way. And so I think the town of Norfolk has done a nice job. There's eight steps in becoming into compliance with the ADA and this is step number six. So a lot of groundwork has gone into this and I think the town is ahead of the curve. So that being said, we did go through and look at your facilities. There were eight facilities in all. We look at things, including the exterior access to the building, so the entire property and the access points that lead to the building, including parking, walkways, and then the entryways, as well as the access inside the building to the different rooms, bathroom facilities, and then also restricted areas such as employee-only rooms. The ADA isn't necessarily concerned with your building. The ADA law is, and Title II in particular, is concerned with the programs, services, and activities that the town provides. So where there's a building that may have services on an upper floor and perhaps there's no elevator to get to the upper floor, you can either install an elevator or you could just move the service. And so our evaluation would note the physical implant, you know, installing a new elevator, but it is up to the town's discretion to identify the services and those upper floors that can be relocated and then gain the credit for installing a new elevator, essentially. So just going back a little bit, the ADA has certain priorities that they are most concerned with that address those public-facing services and that is, can you get to them from outside of the facility ground? So sidewalks, parking, and entryways. Those are the highest priority and should be addressed first. And the next on the list of priorities is the access to the goods and services once you get in the building, which would be your circulation paths within the building. So I mentioned elevators, that's one, stairs, ramps, doorway widths and swings, any obstruction that would block a person who may be in a wheelchair or not provide guidance for visually impaired or hearing impaired or otherwise impaired individuals would be the next priority. And then the third priority would be restrooms. That would be your fixtures that aren't installed with enough room or bathroom stalls that don't have enough room to include a wheelchair or, you know, it's a long list of codes. So that's, that's pretty much the priority summary. And then also, in the report, you'll note that Table 1 summarizes those different categories and shows the priority and shows a dollar value in each category per building. That dollar value is really an accounting measure that we use to track those different items that are in the more detailed appendix that is not included in tonight's documents. That dollar value is really just a way of tracking the compliance progress. So as you either make the recommended repair or do a larger renovation that, you know, changes the facility or relocate the service to another location, that full value gets credited to the overall plan backlog. So that's a way of tracking progress and that's the intent of the attrition plan.
Thank you, Jack. So our next steps are to get this whole, first of all, the board just reviews it tonight and then we put it on file for public comment for 30 days, I believe. And then after that, the board can accept it. From there, we're gonna get the 500 pages in an Excel format so we can start to take track of things that we're going to do to slowly over time become more in compliance. In the first priority, some of the things are pretty straightforward. Some of the buildings need to have, like I went by Olive Day today, can I get it right? And there are handicap spaces right in front of the building, but there's not, they're not all the right width and there's not up-to-date signage. That's probably something fairly inexpensive that we can do in-house, but some of the walkways into the building and such are in poor condition or not at the right height. And so we're talking with Beta about some help with the design of some of the things that are more intricate so that we can get a good plan together and we can go for another state grant to try to take care of some of those high priority items. At first it was really, this was scary for me, I think, for, a little bit for Scott and Matt as well, who I know has also joined us because, wow, this is a big number and there's a lot of things on the list. But I included some of them in your packet that I just wanted to touch on. For instance, I've got this first page of these examples is the Olive Day handicap parking. It's all of, you know, it says it's $8,200, but if we can do some of these things in-house, it might be some paint and some labor. Versus if you go into Olive Day, the second page says that there are $48,000 worth of doors that aren't quite for bathrooms. And we spent some time talking with Jack about that and the answer, and his staff came back and said, look, if you made each area, there are a handicapped set of bathrooms for each area of kids that they can get to, you don't have to do all the doors. And so this becomes something more manageable and we can plan for stuff like that. Conversely, at town hall here, if you go into the land use area where the treasurer's office is, there's three windows. None of them have a handicap area that's lower for someone to wheel up and do business. But we can take a table in that area and we can replace it with one that is at the right height and teach people, teach staff, this is where we're gonna assist someone who comes to this area who needs help and we can check that off the list. I think the one that was troubling for all of us was the police station because there were things there that weren't right. The first thing that came out was that the thermostats on the wall were at the wrong height. But I learned that thermostats have to be at a certain place on the wall to monitor the room temperature and all correctly. As we talked it through some more, we learned that, from Matt, that he centrally monitors all of those. So even though I think I'm doing something by moving, then I'm actually not in control. And it's okay that they're not right because that doesn't, you can't, you can't change it from there. And so what would seem like a finding was not a finding. They had some issues and I think it's the last item here about the way one of our cells is set up. And this is one where they've told us what we're supposed to do, but if we change it, we might likely fail our state inspection. I'm not willing to let us fail our state inspection, just not. So that would not be a good idea because I wouldn't want somebody to do harm to themselves because they could do something in that bathroom that would be, have a poor outcome. So it also may be in the future that when we're doing a project, we need to really make sure that the architect on the project is designing to the ADA standard and that the contractor's putting the sign up on the right place on the wall and so on. And we may even have to have somebody come and check it who's an ADA expert. It bothers me to spend more money to check what other people are supposed to do right, but it may be what we have to do to make sure we don't have any new issues with newer buildings we renovate or replace in the future. Scott, I'm sure I've missed something.
Yeah, well, I mean, you're absolutely right. I mean, some of the things like, for instance, there's a big number for Freeman Kennedy about the sinks because they're, I think they're like a quarter of an inch off, which I suspect happened when they put the wallboard up. So this kind of person, and it's really short money, can help make sure that those construction people are doing those things right when they're, when they put them in. They probably were right when they installed and then they put wallboard in and now they're not right. So, and then there are other things that, like in the police station, there's a big number, there's a maintenance access out to where the antenna is. It's all crushed rock. Well, that doesn't need to be ADA compliant, but then they put picnic tables and a grill out there. So now it's an employee. So we're not gonna go put concrete pads out there. At some point, we'll move the picnic tables and the grill and then that area comes off the list. So there's a lot of those things and a lot of the things that we need to start with are general maintenance. If you look at, if you look at the H. Olive Day School, that, you know, some of the concrete, like where the ramps start is starting to deteriorate, so there's a space or it's moved away from a door a little bit. And that can be troublesome for a person with, in a wheelchair. So, you know, those are maintenance items that'll be high priorities for us. We'll need to put some earnest money into this in the budget and then we'll be applying with the staff grants twice a year that we can apply for and we'll be putting together a list and working with them and getting these things fixed. But it's a long haul project. It's not something that's gonna happen in two years or five years or maybe not 10 years.
Questions?
I have just a couple. The first one is, just I'll use the Freeman Kennedy, I'm gonna use it for a couple of questions. Freeman Kennedy sinks, the quarter inch off, is that, and sort of for any of the items for all of the buildings other than the police department, is this to bring them into compliance with the 1991 rule or with the current rules of the ADA? When it was built, was it in compliance and it is now out and even though their grandfather, sometimes it's still a good idea? Or is it that it has been non-compliant all along?
I'm trying to find the page. Some of them have been non-compliant all the way along.
I believe that was non-compliant.
There was bias from the original, but the space itself was done to compliance, rents and everything, but we figure with the fit and finish between the wallboard and tiles, that bumped it out, but architecturally it was designed for the minimums so they don't add any extra square footage underneath the rooms. And so once they finished it, it put out a compliance, but it's only applicable to the compliant code as it was built. So moving forward, if we put an addition on, we'd have to bring up the new addition and if we put a certain amount of money into the building, we'd have to bring up the compliance to the newer date, but everything that's existing, if we're not improving it over a certain threshold, it can stay.
So that just created two questions. So is everything in here, other than like the really obvious things like a gap or something? Is it to keep us in compliance with whatever the rule is that would have been applicable to that building? Or is it to bring everybody into compliance with the current?
So it would be, unless we go and rehab a building, like when we add this extra space to Freeman Kennedy, it's to bring it to the, it's the standards at the time, the facilities.
Okay, so that was my question. So that if I'm looking at a list and it says that HOD is, has XYZ wrong, it's because in 1991 or 1990, whenever it was, the ADA said XYZ needed to be done a certain way, not currently. So the second question that sort of Matt touched upon, if we're, because I was thinking in terms of opportunity to fix some of this stuff, just vis-à-vis, say Freeman Kennedy, we were talking before about the idea that there's gonna be a need for expansion because of the number of kids, that that may be just one of the times where there's an opportunity to phase in some of the changes. But is it, if I were to be adding on an addition, do I have to bring the whole school into compliance with the current rule?
Yes.
So have you done an audit of this, what it would, right? Like, I mean, if we've just looked at Freeman Kennedy as it relates to 1990 and we know in two years, we're gonna be throwing an addition on that's gonna require Freeman Kennedy in totem to be within 2020, did they do that too? Will you do that?
Actually, I'd like to toss that one to Jack, if we can.
Yes, that's a good question. My understanding is that with, not so much with ADA law, but with 521 CMR, which is the state accessibility code, if you, if the overall cost of your repair exceeds 30% of the value of the property, then the entire building needs to come up to the current code.
Yep. So the overall cost of the repair for the ADA non-compliance or the overall cost of your addition?
The building itself. So if the building is worth a million dollars, you can't spend more, if you're gonna spend more than $300,000, you need to bring the whole building up to...
More than $300,000 on compliance ADA or on the addition?
Building itself.
Because he said repair, so I was like, I don't know, 30% for the repair, okay.
It could be repairs or in...
In this addition, okay.
The addition that they're talking about.
So the goal is to spend 29% on the addition and now we have our ceiling.
Yes.
And...
Yes, so Table 1, just, just for your information, Table 1 has that column that currently shows where Freeman Kennedy is at with value and- and where the, where the non-compliance is relative to that value. But just for, that can be updated as part of the transition plan.
Yeah, the biggest numbers are in the, in the toilet rooms in that building.
Jokes just write themselves sometimes, but, so, so, all right, so I get that. And then in terms of procedure, so a little quick line of questions here and then one last question and then I'll stop talking. In terms of procedure, what I understand is that we're going to say, yeah, okay, this looks good to make available for public comment. And then everybody sits and waits for the comments to roll in. I'm sure they're all going to be super supportive, constructive and friendly. I'm really looking forward to that. And then after that, then there's going to be the dissemination of the big stack, et cetera. And, and then there's going to be, I think, and of course, yeah, now we need to start down this road. Once we start down this road, which obviously we have to do, I just want to make sure that when you were saying, and that's why I think it, right, slowly slash over time, chipping away, that if there's opportunities to do things with short money where you don't, like within the rules, you don't have to come running to the town to say, hey, you know, some yellow paint fell off the back of a truck and we're going to go fix some lines. We don't need to do that. But if it's going to be, you know, on the order of magnitude of many thousands of dollars, what's the process for approval? Only because I know the same people who are going to write super supportive, really constructive comments are going to want to know, are you now going to just run around spending millions of dollars that don't need to be spent because back in my day, we just rolled up the hill? We didn't need this, right? Like when that's coming, can we say each thing is going to be dealt with, you know? It's not like just sort of sneaking this through means all of a sudden there's going to be a million dollars spent, but rather we now know the kind of places that we need to figure out how to fix. Sometimes the fix is just removing the picnic table so that even if you, if you look at the chart, you're thinking, holy crap, that's going to be, you know, $20,000 for a pad for people to argle bargle, but really you're just going to remove it and it's going to, won't be this much. But if it is, you're not going to just do it. How are you going to, is it going to be the elected officials who are going to decide? Is it going to be a town meeting? Does it depend?
I, I would suggest that we're, what we're already working on is what, how many, hopefully for a small amount of dollars, we can get some design work done so we can go for a grant to get the highest priority entrance to building stuff done with a straight state grant. And the simple things like fixing, you know, repainting the lines and stuff, we could do in-house with labor and some paint and a couple of signs. I, I see it as coming up with a budget that we're going to ask for Town You and Town Meeting to support of $5,000, $10,000, $15,000 a year, when we start to slowly pick away at-
It'll be transparency and people will get to hear about it in the budget process and it won't just be all of us sneaking around like-
No, and where can we, can we move the picnic tables? Can we get a compliance sized desk that ticks off all the things?
Right.
And some things, like one of the, one of the items I put in here was that the stairwell here, the handrails are not exactly the right length, whatever. Well, we have a, it's not actually correct, but we have an elevator so someone can be served by coming in and out of the building without using that stairwell. So I don't think we're ever going to address that unless there's a major renovation to this building because we don't need to. And I think it's going to be thought provoking for departments to go, how am I providing the service at the library or helping people at Town Hall? I'd actually be more concerned if someone wanted to come work at Public Works who was in a wheelchair. Are they able to get into the building? Are they able to use the bathroom? Right now, they couldn't, I don't think. That to me is, causes more concern than working on this list. Scott said to me earlier, he said, "Well, you'll probably be retired and the person after you, before we get everything done on the list, it's going to take years." And we just, I think we'll have a working group of staff going, "Okay, what's the next most important things? How much should those really cost? Let's budget for that." And year over year, we'll just keep working on it.
And I would imagine that to the gentleman from Beta's point, as compared with communities who are doing a great job of just standing in front of the problems when people walk by or hiding them or ignoring them or not really caring about it, would have more exposure to liability than the folks who are in mid voluntary fixing of the issue. It's funny that you said, when you were talking about having somebody to make sure that the ADA, and this is my last sort of comment, it's about the police station, because I know that the other ones are older, right? And so some of it is just time and some of it is whatever it is. But with the police station, because it's so new, I would have thought that, that would have been something that you just did, right? Like just like a building commissioner, I, I know that, you know, however it has to be, however many two-by-fours you need and setbacks and all the stuff that is required, I would have absolutely assumed that someone would have thought, well, there's another whole cadre of statutes out there that exists either because it's enabling people, citizenry, to come in and go out or as a protection against loss having to mitigate it later. Whatever, whatever your poison, that that would have been, I just assumed until you said that they, that they didn't, which leads me to the fact that I know that the second one on the, the second on the list of facilities is a two-year-old building as opposed to, which follows behind the building that's from '93. And I know that some of the stuff can get fixed easily, but it's just really shocking to me and I'm hoping that in the, whatever the budget is for everything going forward, that there is someone who's mindful of the compliance relative to ADA and whatever else there is so that it isn't an issue. Because I get, right, so there's, there's someone here, Matt, the disembodied voice of Matt, without even like the cool background. Matt's actually messing with everybody's thermostats and they're not, they're not touching them. But if you're, the part of the exposure with the ADA is that you have someone for whom this is the most important thing. It's important to them and if they walk in and they see certain things, I'm just using the thermostat, it's not likely, and then they start reporting and then people start looking, they're not going to stop to ask, well, can you even use that? Does that even work? Because maybe a new employee can't access, can't reach, doesn't know that someone else is doing it and now feels badly, right? Like it's just a whole host of problems and so it just is surprising and that's, I'll, I'll climb off of my soapbox.
It's an education for employees too, because especially with older buildings, maybe rooms have been repurposed from what they're originally going to be. And people who just don't study this didn't know that it's not okay to do something. Little things like someone stacks up the printer cartridges, toner cartridges are going back in the hallway here, well, they can't be there because they impede getting in the building. That's an education thing. And in the police station, it was frustrating to hear that some of the furniture bought, not just for the police, but for the MEC, which is our tenant, is incorrect. They went and bought it on their own. They made what they thought were great decisions about buying furniture, but they didn't do it with, with the lens of ADA. So you look through the port, you find some dings for furniture upstairs that's not area we access or are responsible for, it isn't correct. And so I think for, for me, it's a greater education of everybody when we're doing these things or how we're using spaces.
Fire, right, just to make sure.
And, but, you know, and possibly spending money to make sure somebody checks what everyone else did. I don't like that idea, but it may be necessary. And the last point I'll make is I learned in this process that there are some federal requirements that are different than state and are, and any building official in any community is only responsible for making sure we meet the state standard. So if there's a federal standard that's slightly different, they're not looking for it, they're not trained to look for it, they're not required to look for it, but it's, but it's a requirement if you're building it. And so we have, we need to be smarter about making sure those are being followed in the future as well.
And your point's well taken. We've already, for the police station, we've, the good news is these consultants were extremely thorough. And so we've already talked to Jack and one of the consultants who we've been pressed with that has worked with him to potentially work with us in the Police Department. And, you know, it's very short money to have them look at this thing as we go through construction to make sure that it's done and the wallboard isn't a half an inch too thick or something, you know? So that I expect will happen.
All right, that's, sorry for my long list. Usually I'm not very chatty, but my own mind. Kevin, you have any questions?
I mean, you pretty much summarized everything in your comments. I, like you, had the same reaction. My one note here was how are there deficiencies in a building constructed two years ago? But I, I think what I'm hearing is that this is the complete full view of an outside consultant that needs to pass through a filter internally of what we're actually looking to dedicate money to. And the first thing that popped in my head when you said that was the exercise that we went through with DPW when we had the Complete Streets project going on. We had a prioritization list that was outlined with each had their own row with cost and why we felt it was ranked the way it was. Something like that I feel would be really helpful in communicating to the community ahead of that meeting so that we don't have people coming in with a sticker shock reaction saying, oh, here we go again. Let's talk about the police station and things that we perceive as being mismanaged. So I'm glad to hear that there is another filter this has to go through. I eagerly look forward to that and I would urge everybody that we get that out far ahead of when we started talking about this in a more public forum.
And so first, thank you for writing the grant because there are things in here that do make life better for citizens in our town. So thank you for doing that work. And I think that it's interesting to listen to you talk about it and see that there are elegant workarounds to solving a lot of these things. And I would just encourage, the leaders of these different buildings would also have a different lens, so encourage, they might have elegant workarounds that we don't know because we're not in the day-to-day operations of those buildings. So we should reach out to those people, whether it's the police chief or the principals of the building, because they know what we do when a kid comes in with a wheelchair. Where do they go to the bathroom? How do, and so they might have feedback that offer other elegant answers to some of these problems. Free or cost, low cost.
Which, you know, my favorite things.
I, I knew that about you.
Anything else?
No, it just, we wanted to have the team all here to answer any questions you have. It was, it was, it was a bit gut-wrenching for the three of us when we first got it and I'm like, oh my goodness. Jack's talked us off the ledge, helped, helped focus us and given us a path forward. So we really appreciate all his work. It's been very helpful.
And thank you for not putting 500 pages in the packet.
Yeah.
Very grateful for that.
Really, we would-
No, it's probably available online. We're with Kili trees and we can scroll through, it's probably a search feature.
Yeah, that's why we gave you five pages.
Kevin can teach me how to do the search for feature, modern technology.
Siri, do it.
Thank you, Jack.
I still fight with Siri.
You're very welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Scott.
Could I beg your indulgence to move the warrant up before the goals, only because I know that Barry has been waiting-
Oh, heck yeah.
Because he's here to just touch on the-
I don't want to keep Barry waiting.
He's been out paving all day. So I, on Secong Street, and I bet he would like to be kicking back at some point.
We should do a round of applause for that.
It depends on, we'll have to see the work first. Again, I'm joking.
So the, taking number eight before number seven, I have included in your packet the, the draft of the warrant and I do want to touch upon a couple of things. But the reason that Barry's joined us is in your packet is a presentation you may have recalled from previous when we talked about the space at the cemetery. We have an article in the warrant to actually use some money from the Perpetual Care Fund to expand one section of the cemetery to add about 100 plots in order to be able to continue to have space for a couple of years before we need to really think about more space. So I asked Barry to join us to give you a quick overview of that and answer any questions you have about it because he knows it in more depth than I do. Hey, Barry.
Good evening, everybody. How's it going?
Good, how are you?
Marvelous. So as, as always, Blythe gave an awesome tee up. So currently we have about 42 available plots at the North Cemetery, which is at Main Street and Secong. In your packet, it kind of goes over all the other available plots that we have at the Pondville Cemetery. Norfolk Cemetery is our priority cemetery. So there's an area in the back of the cemetery that we were looking at and, you know, for, for minimal cost, we, we can actually do an expansion out there and get us a few more years out of using the Norfolk Cemetery before we have to look at the, the big question of moving to someplace else or getting out of the cemetery business altogether. So we reached out to the same engineering firm that we're using to do the salt shed, I believe it's Bay Colony, Bay Colony Group. They were able to put together the price. Reached out to several companies that actually do the cemetery work. None of them were available. So they gave us the, their estimate for the survey and the engineering and actually laying out the plots. There is a little site work we have to do, not a whole lot. We're thinking we can do most of that with the DPW in conjunction with our subcontractor of Kadesh Construction. And then there's going to be a little area that we want to fence off so residents don't have grass piles and other dirt material that we have stored at the cemetery. So for the project costs, we're looking at $24,695.
So the Perpetual Care Fund has just under $100,000 in it that we've accumulated over time. And so we, the proposal is that we would use about a quarter of those funds to do this project. Barry, about how long do you think it would take from approval to being able to sell new plots?
I'm thinking probably about, the heavy list, we were out there, we thought progress was going to be difficult. I did a little research on the registry, ADP's found some good markers, some good existing points, so we'd be off of that. There are large rock ground. We don't know the size of them, so the DPW would attempt to dig them and sell. And that's when our subcontractor was out if they get too big for us. A bit of filling, a little, a little bit of grading, so there's really not any left to get this coming. We're thinking that, you know, if we have all winter like we had last winter, this would be good work to keep the grounds guys busy in, you know, November, December, January.
So we just wanted to go a little bit deeper dive than, than 30,000 foot, no pun intended, to digging. Not my night, you know?
Still got time.
I just would have rolled with it.
Sorry. Questions or things you'd like to know more about from Barry or myself?
I did not know until just right now that we had a section of the cemetery known as Sleepy Hollow.
Yeah.
So that's pretty cool. And I also have to just say, and this is like the last stupid thing I'll share tonight, I think. My mom has an expression, in my line of work, we deal with people all the time wanting constant care and people on the other side of cases always, you know, admonishing as though it was like my day to watch my client, whatever they did. And my mother's expression has always been, and I now love it, "You only get perpetual care in cemeteries." It's fantastic, right? No idea, you know, for a long time I didn't know what it meant. Finally I figured it out, but just to hear the Perpetual Care Fund brings me such joy. Like that it's like, I don't know, I just had to share that. Yep, it does. So I don't have any other questions myself, so. Oh, one, how do you, how long has the, how do you get money into the Perpetual Care Fund? Like if you've been acquiring a hundred grand, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, so when every, when every plot gets sold, depending upon a cremation or a full burial, there's a sum of money that gets put aside so then we can perpetually maintain the cemetery, update roads and do things like this expansion. So it's been going on for quite a while. It was actually something, you know, I kind of stumbled across the perpetual care because I'm selling plots. I'm like, well, what is this? So Blythe and I and Todd kind of dug into it a little bit deeper and realized that there was a, you know, a pretty good sum of money sitting there for us to utilize.
How long has it been sort of not utilized? And I guess, the only reason I'm asking is now, it seems like that's a healthy enough sum that it's sort of generating enough that it-
I, I don't know the last time it was tapped, but I can tell you that the general operating costs of the cemetery are in the general fund.
Right.
We don't tap this to do-
Not at all.
Anything and Town Council opined that we actually needed a town meeting approval to spend these funds the way that we're organized. So I would think it's not taken, you know, it's a major decision to ask Town Meeting to allow us to spend it. So I'm guessing it doesn't happen very often, no. Very often, no.
I think they might have used it a few years ago before my time. Some roads were repaved in the cemetery. So I'm kind of think they probably.
Okay, so for that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
I know, my father used to always say about cemeteries, the reason they put fences in cemeteries is because people are dying to get in. That was the dad joke.
I got dad jokes.
He's in the lead now. Nicely done.
Do not forget to tip your waitresses, ladies and germs.
I do have a couple of questions. We said that there are 42 plots currently available. How many did we sell last month?
Last month.
Last month? Well, here's, here's what's happened. Since we've kind of, kind of let the cat out of the bag about lots being a lot left in the cemetery, sales have gone through the roof. So wealth has gotten, gotten around and we're selling quite more lots than I've ever sold in the past. I want to say probably year to date, we're like 20 to 30. And that's pretty, pretty high for the cemetery. They've never really sold that much in a year before.
So.
Aren't they like required, aren't there like certain requirements, like?
Yep. Yeah. So for Norfolk Cemetery.
Hangham, Massachusetts and decide, right? What are the.
Yeah, you have to be a Norfolk resident.
Yeah, 20 years and over the age of 59. So there are some requirements.
Okay. So, I mean, there isn't, I mean, there's an urgency to add more, but it's not like we're going to tell people no soon, right? We still have enough to get us through.
This will help us, give us some, some leeway till we have to really have a discussion about what, what do we do next? Do we stay in the business or do we acquire, acquire other land? Or do we stop taking any new barrels unless they are for the veterans?
Right. So I see even more veterans. But if it was 20 this year and there's 42 open, but the 120, 150 does buys you.
Sometimes.
Sometimes.
Just out of curiosity, what do we currently charge Barry for a plot?
You're going to put me on the spot. It's 200 for a cremation. I believe it's 500 for the full burial, 200 for the cremation, perpetual care, and 300 for the full burial perpetual care. And I did a couple, I want to say a year and a half ago, I did look at other towns and to see what they were, what their prices are. And we're pretty consistent with towns in the area. Private cemeteries were lower, but they'd be expected. The private cemeteries charge more than a municipality would.
Gotcha. Thank you. All the questions I had.
All right, no, anything more?
Thank you, Barry.
Thank you very much.
Nice job out on Seekonk today.
Thank you. That was, that was an interesting day. We got another day added tomorrow and then Fruit Street and the rest of our roads. So we're going to have a busy week.
Looks great. Thank you.
Thanks, Barry.
Have a good night.
I don't need to go through the whole warrant unless you'd like to. I just wanted to touch on a couple of things. On the question I had asked you about stabilization funds, we expect our free cash to be higher than previous years based on what you know about the budget. And Todd and I think it's important to add some funds there. Our recommendation would be to do it as part of the transfers, like we did with OPEB last year, but didn't know if it was important to call it out because do this very often to have it as its own article. So I wanted to bring that up again. I also wanted to tell you that right now we don't have any committee updates, but I'm still following up on that. We have two, we have the language in here for the two solar projects, but I'm becoming clear that we'll not be able to do the police station one. The reason being, and we didn't realize this before we were approached by a solar vendor, is that because we borrowed money to build the building and build the parking lot and we have debt on it, bondholders will probably not allow us to borrow, to lease out something we don't own free and clear. As opposed to the water tank, we do have a year of debt remaining on the tank, but not on the ground. And this is, and that's where the array would go is ground mounted. So that's one we probably still will be able to move forward with. So number 10 may drop off the warrant. And then the various zoning bylaws are in front of the planning board. The sign change to allow us to have an internally lit sign for town use. The floodplain bylaw are both going to be heard by the planning board on October 12. And conservation and DPW and I are talking about the article for stormwater. That's the general bylaw. It doesn't need to go before planning. And then we will not be able to move forward with the codification of the general bylaws. That was a project being handled by the assistant town clerk who just left and didn't realize that there was about a five month period between when we got the company, the final changes we wanted to make and them creating the final document. And then we're too close to town meeting to get that done. So we're going to try and regroup and have both the general and the zoning bylaws before the spring annual town meeting. So I expect us to be down to 13 articles, 12 if you want to take care of stabilization as part of a transfer.
When do you have to decide on the stabilization as far as where?
We don't have to decide tonight. We could discuss it on the 5th, but I do need to know by the 19th when we're finalizing the warrant.
I was just curious. I mean, from my perspective, I think it's probably on brand that my sense is that it should just be in with everything else as an item and that there's some sort of shock and awe at the treatment of stabilization money. I'm suspicious because the people who would be shocked and in awe would be unlikely to have any sort of awareness of stabilization. And if it's something that really was going to engender that much, you know, it can be a topic of conversation around the water cooler slash on Facebook within the confines of the, the rest of the transfers would just be my opinion in terms of focus and, you know, giving it more weight. Too much weight and creating a negative buzz. And the only other thing, question I had observationally usually in the past, I'm sure it's like this in most towns, if any has a committee report, my recollection from my prior boards and appointments is those are kind of late to the party. Those are, those aren't showing up particularly early. There was one other question, but I'll open it up to other people while I try to figure out what the heck. I know I had thought of something else. Kevin, do you have any?
To the point of the stabilization, stabilization funds, you know, I think that the obvious negative perception could be, oh, it's trying to be buried in with everything else. So we don't have the opportunity to talk about it. But I mean, it's really disorganizational in nature. And I think that if we highlight the fact that this is something that we're doing within this section, if anybody wants to talk about it, you're still going to have the opportunity to do that.
Oh, sure.
Not going to be swept under and try to be rushed through. I think that would just be the biggest part of including it in the transfers.
Okay. Well, and I think, I think that's right, that there would be people who will say, oh, but, but the reality is, is it's not as though the transfers are things that you cannot talk about. And I'm often with people, the people who sort of are new, learning about the systems and the way things happen and go and who get up at town meeting and shake their fist and are angry that because they don't have all of the information. I think Kevin had to keep me on the stage one night when I was going to come down. They interrupt people and they talk over people and whatever. I mean, not thinking of any particular person. We're always reminding them that there's all sorts of information that we're consistently putting out. The warrant will be out there. All of this information will be out there. And if they have any questions, if they want to vet it within an inch of its life, go for it. But if it belongs with the other transfers, it's going to go with the other transfers. We're not going to spoon feed people stabilization as a separate entity, in my opinion. Very good stuff. I know that's kind of on brand.
So I guess I have some mixed feelings about it. On one hand, I agree with what you're saying. That makes good sense to me. On another hand, because of COVID going on, keeping it short and sweet, it makes good sense to me. But there, there is something to be said for, and I can see how it's misinterpreted. So, but having that opportunity to celebrate when we've done things well, like we've done things well. And there's so many people asking for really careful work with the budget. And we've done that work and it has a payoff and we're going to see the payoff at town meeting. And so there is some point of saying we, we were careful as you asked us to be and look at this payoff for us. And because of this work and these choices and, and the grants and all of the things that different departments have done, look, cool, we've moved this money. But I agree with you, it does belong with the transfers. It is a transfer. And so then making it a separate thing, some people will be cynical and say, well, what are they really trying to say? So I can see the backfire. I think that the backfire is, is real and perceptions are real. And, and not that they are true, but they're real.
Right.
So probably it belongs with the transfer. The two reasons is one, it helps keep the meeting a little bit shorter because it's COVID and we don't want to gather. And the other is because there will be people who are saying, why are they, why isn't that in with the transfers?
Back in the day when you had to have a two thirds vote, I think it wouldn't have been because transfers are a simple majority and this was two thirds. I mean, I or Todd would be happy to get up and explain to people why we're moving it and why we should have a certain threshold. And this gets us closing all the reasons. If someone wants to ask, we'd love to inform them.
Right. I never get a sense. Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's all right. I think it's just nice to celebrate the fact that we actually have the money to move. Right? That right there, that we have the money to move, I think is, is pretty exciting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, opportunities for victory laps are kind of few and far between.
Very few.
In this form, so. We're necessarily going to pass that up. I think we will definitely tout that leading up.
Even within the transfers. But I also think that, you know, you can't, you can't, there's, even in moments where you expect it to be flat.
It won't be. I, I know that.
Just managing expectation.
Yes, I understand. But it is an opportunity, especially for the folks who've worked so hard to have that be to say, like, look at what we did. And this is how the town is benefiting. And then the cynical people can go on Facebook and explain how that we were lying. And it's not really true. And I think it's nice to honor the work that, but it is a transfer. It is a transfer. A transfer is a transfer. So.
And to be clear, I mean, I, it just, it's probably from like my moderator hat or whatever it is in terms of when you're looking and you're trying to figure out ways to not rush the processes that should happen, but to, yeah, keep things moving along. And I, and I had forgotten in terms of keeping things moving along that this would be also would be indoor meeting at the sort of, hopefully, the tail end of the pandemic for whatever that's worth. So that's just what I was thinking there. So, you guys have any other comments, observations?
Not for mine.
About the warrant? I didn't, I still can't remember what the heck it was that also popped into my head about the warrant. So.
One other thing.
Oh, I remember.
Excellent.
One of these days, we're going to get viewers. And I have another thought before the end. Do you have any idea if there are going to be any citizens? Have you heard any rumblings of people?
I saw an email today from the town clerk's office that someone had inquired about the form, but I haven't heard from that person or, or whether they're going to, what the topic might be, or if they're planning to come forward in the fall or the spring. So if I get that call, I'll certainly help the person understand it.
Interesting. I always like to know what people are, have their.
Nothing yet. The only other point I was going to make is we did include in your packet the, the stormwater bylaw, the floodplain bylaw. They are long. We are planning to not print them in the warrant itself, but we'll have them on file at the town clerk's office. We'll have them on the website. We'll have copies at town meeting. It's just mailing 20 pages.
It's expensive and it's a waste of trees.
So, thank you.
Before I finish, I'm taking a picture. Just, I'm not taking a picture of you guys, but it says Select Board Zoo. And I just, it just says that. And I just, Kevin, somehow this needs to be our background.
All eternity.
I don't know. I, I'm like my mom at this point. Pretty soon I'm going to start talking more loudly.
On the Select Board's new website page, just say Select Board Zoo across the board.
Make sure you got it.
All right. That was it. Okay. That was it for me. Anything else?
I need to find the name of this.
Oh, it's kind of fun. I think, I think we like it. We're attached to it now.
No, yeah, no, I would be very sad if I came in and it wasn't the Select Board Zoo. Makes me feel younger.
It's something boring, right?
Also got our Halloween costume motif now set up perfectly for us.
That's right.
Forward to that.
The sun never stops at the Select Board's office. All right. So I guess we're going back to seven, right?
We are.
So excited. Mixing it up. I can't find my list. This is the goal.
What he sent. What, what Scott, oh, Kevin sent. So in your, so next I was talking about goals and objectives. I put some ideas in the packet and some.
She's facilitating at home.
Background of what we did get accomplished this past year. And I managed to lose what Amanda gave me of what Kevin sent in today. Ah, thank you. I knew it was there somewhere.
Lee sent in late.
I sent in today. Just.
You know who hasn't sent it in yet? Me. You were, you were first. Yeah.
We want to celebrate wins.
Thanks for that taken.
Yeah. And you earned it. That's, it's due.
And, and we also had last year's work plan, which had some details on it of what we were working on then. So.
So in a package is.
Here's everything you have.
Kevin Calcutt's Select Board Goal Proposals, right there. The only thing. In the book, right there, showing it to Ernie and us apparently because we're the only two people in here.
Okay.
So now are we supposed to do something? Are we supposed to like?
Well, we have a strategic plan.
We're working on one, right?
You know, it's a matter of what you think is important that we should be driving towards in, in the next year. So like I said, I played off of things we'd been working on or think, thought we'd want to continue or things that have come up. And Kevin took his approach of, in the list that he provided. And so I think this is just a jumping off point.
Looked at Kevin's list. I like the Community Forum Cable Show. Office hours.
Your favorite, too.
It's my favorite. It's like, I miss it so much with the pandemic. I just, so much people interaction that I miss. All right, I'll read it. Well, so Kevin Calcutt's Goal Proposals.
My God.
Discussion. The only ones that were submitted timely, reinstating monthly Select Board office hours, which we had terminated or suspended because of Corona.
Right.
So I think that it would actually be a cause celebre if we were, when we are able to resume because Anita's missed out on that. She should take the lead, leading the moron interacting with the community.
Well, the question is, is live office hours or virtual?
They were.
They were. That's why it probably won't happen again. But, oh, no, they were.
Live.
They were live.
So someone could come in and say, I want to sit and talk with a select board member of something directly.
Yeah, okay. The only thing I experienced with it that I don't know that there's anything you can do about it, but that I found that there was consistently certain folks who would come make their comments, not Ernie, by the way. Let me be very clear that I'm looking at him because he's the only person in the room, but I'm not looking at him. They would come in, they would make their comments, they would reiterate, they'd have the hands up, they'd be consistently about whatever their issue was. And then they would also be pretty much exclusively the only people who would show up to go over the exact same ground. And I guess that's just, that is, right? You handle it however you handle it.
No.
Anyone care to guess how, how I handled it? We've been over that. But it, there were, I will say, there was a time or two where people were like, oh, there's office hours. And they would come down and ask, actually ask pretty, pretty thought provoking questions about things impacting CNN. Like that wouldn't have, you know, really granular level, which was kind of cool. But it was one on one in an internal conference room. So I don't know when to start that. But I do think that sort of the, the community involvement piece with the, you know.
Yeah, I think that's fair. I think.
I mean, we are open for business. So, you know, people can come in and they come and see us for things now.
It's a word to office. When were the office hours, like during the day?
We rotated. If you could do it in the morning, we had one person do it in the morning one month, next person did afternoon, next person did the evening. And we kind of rotated through. So each person had a month. So you basically end up doing it once every quarter.
Okay. It really wasn't dangerous at all. I just like to adopt my curmudgeonly, you know, persona, but I imagine.
It's a good idea.
I imagine that you could, even if you were doing it now, I mean, you could book this room, I would suspect, or something this large, you know, it just so. It, it just so happens that where I was, was sort of small and internal and I wouldn't necessarily, I don't know that it's even so much me worrying as maybe other people would feel that they couldn't. So I think, you know, sort of exploring the community involvement piece.
I think it's a good idea. I think it's the kind of thing we'll groan when it's our turn, but then we'll be glad we did it, we'll be glad we were there. So we should probably do it.
Can I make a quick recommendation? Some of the ones that I have in that list kind of build off of the things that we've already had and our goals up until this point. But it makes sense just to go through a quick highlight of the things that we had and where we are with them, and then maybe some of those things that I put on that list might make a little bit more sense.
Cool.
So, and we're working off of the green one.
Yep.
Right? So, all right, do you want to take the leading edge on this?
Now that I said something, sure. Um, so the first one we had on this list was to expand the Conversation Corner Program. We absolutely did that. We instituted a new program that we called the Norfolk Community Forum, uh, where we invited somebody from, uh, Town Hall to come speak to a specific aspect and then go through some of the happenings in town. I believe it was fairly well received. Uh, we got some great feedback from the community, got some good views over on NCTV's YouTube channel. Um, so I, I think that was a huge success. And one of the things that I had put in there was, uh, to kind of revive that a little bit. I know it's been on the down slope since we're just coming out of a slower summer month or summer period. Uh, so I did have as one of the goals there to revive that and get those going again as we lead into Fall Town Meeting to emphasize some of the points we want to get across about, you know, where in transfers you'll be able to find the, uh, allocation of funds to stabilization.
Another, just a random idea, just to throwing it out there because that's what we're doing, right? Throwing things out there.
Yeah, just randomly throwing stuff out.
So one of the things that as our kids go through school is they need to learn about community helpers and things like that. So we could have questions that kids write in or little kid voices saying, so what does this person do? Or something, we could incorporate the schools into something like that. Or they might have an episode where they're involved. I think that that would get more people to view because if.
I think Ingrid got the most views. The time we had her on, we got the most views ever.
But if the kids were writing the questions or if the kids were like, what do you want and what does, what, tell us about the transfer station. Oh my God, they'd have so many questions and it would be fun, right? Because you have, we probably couldn't show the kids faces for confidentiality reasons, but you could have their voices, right? They could record their questions and then whoever we're interviewing. I think something I could be in, I, I'm not in charge, I'm not doing.
Also happening through like the internal brain was like. The internal voice is like.
It was not.
What are you doing?
But I think the kids' voices would be fun. I'm not volunteering anything. I'm volunteering.
Record scratch. How did I end up here?
Yeah, I will say that when we do have kids who join our Select Board meetings to talk about a letter that they wrote in or a proposal that they made or a function that they're doing within Girl Scouts or Boy Scouts, I think the response is fantastic from the community and I think it's great. I mean, it looks like they are loving the fact that they're engaging in this forum. So, I mean, I think having them actually be there, I needed to your point, would be great.
You have to get their parents' permission.
To be on, right.
I always write yes on everything.
We could also invite them to come and lead us in the pledge or things like that where we bring kids in. So for all our audience out there, we would love to have, for, for the Select Board Zoo who is out there, um, we would love to have kids coming in and, um, lead their community in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Probably have like some sort of a sign up and volunteer.
Yeah, they shouldn't just pop in. You think they should.
No, they can pop in too, but like what if like five, what if there's like a rush?
Then we could sing God Bless America and do little songs. I know, it's losing control. We could have a sign up. I think a sign up would be lovely.
We're just trying to increase our, our viewerhood, viewership, whatever. All right.
So we're all on the same page then for the importance of that show.
Community engagement. I think we're all on the same page for community engagement, exploring community engagement, et cetera, moving down. I think.
The visual budget is awesome.
Yep.
We're working on that. We're, we're going to be rolling out the digital budget book. We're working literally on that right now. And then for the capital, and then we'll have a digital budget book for the operating budget in the spring, so that's in process.
This is Christmas in July for Blythe, ladies and germs.
It's, it's awesome.
She's been talking about this. I think it's very exciting. I just think it's so, I don't know, you're going to be really sad when it's done and out though.
Now I'm onto a website.
The website to look forward to.
That's true. That's true. Um, so, nope, nope, you're just.
I was going to say that the next one is to develop a town newsletter, paper and electronic. This is something I don't think we ever really made any headway on. I included a note in here in speaking with, uh, one of my counterparts from Rentham. They were able to use grant funding to be able to hire a PR firm that handles all of that communication for them. And it's like every social media account you can think of, it's stuff on their website, it's managing.
Is it the same one that KP uses and?
I think so, yes.
I want a grant to hire people to do stuff for me too.
So, I mean, we keep putting these kinds of things on our list. Maybe it's worth exploring if we'd be able to apply for that grant as well.
Probably going to have to separate it.
Uh, so that was kind of looped into one of the new ones that I put on for the exploration of a grant towards a PR firm.
Yeah, because my, my concern about internal is not that, not that, you're certainly willing to do it, but making sure that it's actually timely and relevant.
Right.
You know, by the time we print it, write it, print it, get it mailed, is it kind of yesterday?
Right.
You know, and should we approach it in a different way?
Exploring holding Town Hall forums. Forums aren't exactly a thing just yet, so put that one on the back burner for now.
We'd also just want to see if you, with the 110 other interactions in, in the town, get, get some traction and then you can sort of jump off from those to a forum to introduce the forum concept to them.
Partnering with the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, I think that we've had a couple of things come up here and there, whether it be our involvement in the Eagle Scout ceremonies, whether it be the, uh, Girl Scouts and their, they were pursuing a, I forget which level of certification, they were pursuing a project that was bronze certification, I believe? Gold? Darn it, I'm going to get skewered for that, but, um, I think we made some good headway there as well.
So keep it as a goal or not?
Dubtails with Anita's observations regarding, um, involving kids.
But I do believe with that, it's a little bit, the onus is a little bit on the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts to take point on that. We can show an openness and say, we'd love to partner with you, but, um, the, it's, I think beyond that, it's their responsibility to come to us.
Yep, and just, and I agree, just sort of signal that we're open to it.
And then the last one was to build an inclusive and informative budget, budget process, um, something that I think that we've made great strides in over the course of the last couple of years.
Since that night when everybody got sworn in.
Yep. Um, one other thing for community engagement that I had, knew that I was proposing was to evaluate the cost and potential to execute an annual event for the community, kind of Memorial Day-esque, uh, maybe not to that scale, maybe to that scale. Uh, I had this written down before we did the 150th celebration this past weekend. And the feedback has been overwhelmingly positive for the efforts, what was done, how it was executed. I don't think that we should necessarily try to match that scale every year, but I think it's worth a conversation for some other kind of bringing the community together type event, um, that may be managed by the town or in coordination with the town and other organizations. Um, I don't know what that would be. I don't know what that would focus on, but, uh, I think good to pursue and at least investigate to see what that would take from our perspective.
Yeah, I mean, just to tell you what we've done in the past for Memorial Day, we have had a small budget for supporting that and we've helped coordinate getting, you know, people together who are going to be in the parade and then, then actually being in it. Um, because we haven't had it the last two years, we've had it on our kind of, our diary to make sure that we got the group together, say in January, and really planned forward for what this next parade, the one we're going to finally get to have again, would look like and get those players together. We could try to expand that a little bit, but I think it's also a question of, you know, if it becomes much more or, or anything like what happened this weekend. I mean, I heard they raised $20,000. That's a big, big number for our budget or to expect people to come up with annually. So what, what do we want it to be?
I think some communities have like Midway Days or Norfolk Day, or they have a day for their town and it's just a fun day to gather. And I agree, I, the, the, and I'm glad to actually have a chance to say like thank you to the Parade Committee and for all the work they did. What a positive event that was for our town and how amazing it was to see everybody gathered and to be a community, right? To come together as a community. And, um, so having something like a Norfolk Day is exciting, right? To have the opportunity to come together as a town and whether that involves a parade or not, a parade or booths or, or whatever, other creative people can think of the details, but saying we want to have a Norfolk Day or maybe we want to do it every other year. Or maybe, you know, something like that where we think about that. It was very exciting to, to be together as a community.
Is it, should we build on the community, I mean, Community Day in June, wasn't that kind of what Norfolk did?
It was hosted by the Lions, yeah.
Yeah, I realize it's hosted by the Lions, but maybe building on that, if that's able to come back as a good jumping off point for something people remember, recognize, could become something more than it is?
It's interesting, when I, um, in, when I was first reading the, the note about what you'd written, I was thinking what you were thinking. I was like, oh, but there's Community Day and, um, and obviously there's budgetary constraints and there's all the things that I, as the curmudgeon of the group think of, but then I was thinking about it more from the construct that you're suggesting and that you were sort of opining about the, uh, what was evocative about last weekend's parade. And I grew up in Hingham and in Hingham they have a Fourth of July parade. And it was probably a big deal when I was a kid because I can remember like being, it went on forever. And now it's like ridiculously huge, but it just every year grew a little more and it was just, that was sort of their thing. I'm not saying they're the only ones, but like, and I know there's a lot of communities do it, so, um, if you, and then the thinking is, oh, who are you going to have volunteer? And then I was like, Paul and Donna, they did a perfect, right? Like there are people who this is, right? So I think it's, I don't know that we have to vet the whole thing tonight, but even though I, you know, there is Community Day and maybe that's the day that it dovetails with or if it's a holiday like you were suggesting, just to have like, I think, and I think it's a great idea.
I just had a random idea. I know you love it when I have random ideas.
I just don't know when to.
At a town, at a town meeting, could we honor Paul and Donna at a meeting? I think that we should, they, the amount of work that went into the planning for that day.
I bet you could go in the community, like, right? The notices, isn't there, like for the committees? Their committee.
Let's recognize them on that.
Yeah.
I think that would be.
Is there something more formal that we have? Like I know that the state has the citations that they can issue.
We can get those.
For certain things, but is there something like that that we could, I mean, this is.
For their service to the community?
Incredible.
It was incredible. It really was, like, that's a big word.
Some communities will just make, want to make a speech about them and give them a bouquet of flowers. Some communities have special, uh, like one tenant community I work with, at, um, any time someone had been longstanding on a board was finally getting off, they made them the fence viewer for the next year and they made a big to do about it at town meeting. We're bestowing on you this honor to be, or the measure of wooden bark. It's not really a, something that we do anymore as a daily job. And they assigned them, determined who was, what the qualifications were for both and annually they gave out those, uh, responsibilities. I mean, it can be anything you want it to be.
Okay, I think I'm going to, it'd be great if you could maybe let us know about some other more common recognition media we've used in the past.
No, you're building a fence.
And they can sit on the fence.
You're just going to bring it? You're going to build, yep. So it's happening, that's what's going to happen.
I will reach out to my Norfolk County, uh, county peeps and ask them if they have any particular traditions that they can tell me about.
I would love for them to be recognized because that was just a ton of work and it really.
Well, you guys can plan to just do that. You can decide you're going to recognize them. Ask Jay, tell him you want to.
Some swag and, yeah.
All right, the next section is strategic planning. Uh, we talked about wanting to pursue some education and training focused on diversity.
And I've done a little bit of work there, not enough to have, um, a recommendation yet because it's not something I think we want to do just sort of.
We don't want to slap it together.
Willy nilly, but I have, um, investigated, I met with the diversity officer actually in, in my district and also talked to Ingrid about meeting with, um, Jessica Pepel. And so I'll come forward with information soon about what we think would be good, um, for that, for training. And then the community conversations and the most recent thing, um, I'm, I'm super interested in wanting to, um, you know, one of the things I guess I've learned as I learned more about systemic racism is that you can be in the same town or in the same street and have completely different experiences than the people around you based on the color of your skin or based on different parts of, um, whatever, but that because you can be side by side and having different experiences, I'm very interested in talking to our, um, Black and Brown citizens and saying, what is it like to live in Norfolk and how do you, how do you go about understanding that? But in talking to some diversity officers, it also has a risk of becoming a fishbowl kind of experience where you're putting your minorities into a fishbowl and saying, please represent us. And so it, that's fraught with troubles, um, to do that. And so, um, I would like to do that with care and intention because that's not my intention, but rather to gather information about how are we doing and can we do better for all of our citizens, not for most of our citizens. And so I have had conversations about that and perhaps, um, Jessica Pepel could partner with me in some of those conversations so it feels more, um, diverse. And so I'll continue to work on that to that end. Is that fair?
That is more than fair, thank you.
That actually makes sense too, what she was sharing.
Uh, we had on here as well to, um, kind of take a deep dive into the economic effects of COVID-19. Obviously, as we go into this Fall Town Meeting, we're identifying that we're in a better than expected position from a fiscal perspective. Obviously, there's going to be some longstanding procedural and, um, maintenance kind of things that we're going to have to address, but, um, perhaps as we head into the spring of next year, it would be a good time to really take a step back and take a look at what the impacts will be and could be, and then come up with a plan from there.
If it's necessary.
If necessary, correct.
Yeah, so what are we addressing if we think it was?
If they're, are going to. Yeah, I mean, if, if that's the case and that's the answer, right?
Right.
Plan done, we did it. Um, but if there is something that we need to work into a more annual budget, not an emergency budget as it pertains to, you know, cleaning or anything of that nature, I don't know what that would be at this point.
Okay.
To that, um, kind of touching on that, has there been any more interaction, um, or To that, kind of touching on that, has there been any more interaction, or meetings, or anything with Norfolk County?
So the next full meeting of the Advisory Board is going to be on the 29th, I believe, and that's going to be the first real one that I'll be a part of. I did get an email back identifying that the question we had asked about the breakdown of the spending for the percentage that will be staying with the county, if that will be made available to the group, and I was told that that's a yes, it absolutely will. But past that, there hasn't been any other interaction or engagement.
I'm just wondering if it may be, again, sort of in the, somehow in the, what's it called, I forget, I should remember, but in the section of the town meeting for committees, if you had, if you had, I think it may be a good opportunity to share with the town meeting, the huzzah, we just scored a, that VC tells me I have to save poop-ton of money, and let me tell you a little bit more about it, right?
Absolutely, you have your first committee report, Blithe.
I was thinking he could do it.
Well, I meant just for the list, I'm going to have to do it.
I figured.
But she'll, she can do that.
Blithe's like going to separate all of us.
We're getting a little punchy here, the hour is ticking.
It is ticking.
All right, well, we'll push through the end here. We had a developed proposal to update the master plan, that is well underway, thanks to the help of a state grant and the amount of $40,000.
Amazing.
Potentially reorg the Economic Development Committee, which I believe is now on a dependency for the master plan update to be done, is that correct?
Yep, I talked with Rich McCarthy about that. It was really his thought that we wait till the plan was done, he's going to discuss that with the Planning Board and make sure they're on the same page about that.
Great. Investigating operational efficiencies, the health grant has paved the way for our new collaborative nursing effort, that started back in?
July, right?
July, August, and our new health agent will be his, his first office hours will be here on Thursday.
Hastic?
So I mean, to me, this is something we always continue to think about, but we may not, some years we may accomplish one or two things, some years we may not, it just depends on what comes forward as opportunities.
And maybe an opportunity, if he, is it, is the health agent going to be sort of consistently, like, with consistency, periodic visits?
He's going to be here Monday afternoons and Thursday mornings every week. We went from having someone who was here very part-time, just doing anything that's needed to.
Right, I just figure once he gets, once the community gets used to him being here, by which, you know, they recognize he's here, there's consistency, maybe the office hours of the select people could be timed to be sort of adjacent, or at the same time, you know, because if people are sort of like, they know, I'm going to go and talk to the person about this or that, then I can go talk to this person about, you know, get all of my information acquisition done at once. Get more bodies in the seats, other than like, you know, one.
It's possible too, that, I remember you talking about how we have sort of a black hole of public health, and so maybe we want to add public health as a standalone thing in our strategic planning, that we are going to explore opportunities to strengthen the public health act, the public health component of town leader, town, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, we probably want to sit and talk with the Board of Health more as they get comfortable with what the new arrangement is, and the level of service we achieve with the grant, is it, is it going to be enough, or is, do we need to go further with it? So on.
Until we see the impact of.
Yeah. We'd like the transfer station, maybe after our first year of operation, be a time to touch base again with them.
That sounds like a good idea. We evaluated programs to reduce the fiscal burden on seniors in the community. At our annual town meeting in the spring, we approved a new fund that was to be used for Blithe filming in.
People could make donations to then help people who are in need, so we need to get the, that's a five-member committee, it's the treasurer, the COA director, the chairman of the Board of Assessors, and then two citizens. I think we need to get the first three together and kind of figure out what we need to do before we invite others, and then get that group going. And we just hired, the other thing we did was get the, we're getting the bus from Gatra to be able to provide more rides, we just onboarded a driver today, waiting for the bus to come, and then we'll be able to roll out more transportation for people at, you know, no cost to us. So the two things we got done. I don't see any near-term other things to work on right now. I think we kind of checked that box, my suggestion, but maybe there's something I'm not thinking of.
I mean, we polled the council on aging to see if they have any suggestions from their perspective of things we might want to pursue as a municipality.
We can try.
Cool, thank you. I included one, you know, since, from the Planning Board up to the Select Board, we've been talking about what the impacts of the census would have on our affordable housing levels here in town, and now we have our numbers finally. And I just put a note in here to see if there's anything that needs to be adjusted in terms of our planning, our development plans, our housing plans, as it pertains to the new stats that we've accommodated for, I think it came out to 500 or so new single-family homes in town, which knocked our percentage down to four-point-something percent.
Yep.
I just didn't know if that was something that was accommodated for, updated, addressed.
I would turn that over to Rich and to Affordable Housing. I don't have a, don't have any input on that.
The last one for strategic, strategic planning, got it, was to develop a 10-year pavement management plan. I think that we got a plan that identifies what needs to be done, right? Just $10 million to get it to where it needs to go, so.
I mean, one of the things you'll see when we're working on our list of capital expenditures, working hard, last year we spent an extra $100,000 on pavement, really like to spend $200,000 this year, like to continue to move it up as we can afford to, I mean, that's not a great strategy, but it's movement.
Yep. And the last section was titled for Town Facilities, we talked about evaluating the transfer station fees, I think that we have another review coming up soon.
We can do it, continue to do it after each quarter.
Each quarter, yep.
So keep that on the list?
Yes, please, I mean, unless anybody has a different thought. The fire station projects, and we've made great strides from this perspective in appointing a new committee, going through the multiple reviews, hearing a couple of recommendations in terms of the key stakeholders in the process, so I think this has been moving along pretty well.
We are anticipating being able to bring you a contract recommendation on October 5th to hire the architect, and start the feasibility study.
Evaluating plan for the Freeman Kennedy Expansion, unfortunately, we were in part of the MSBA's program for the last cycle, but we are looking forward to the next cycle to reapplying.
So we, that got turned in in June, I talked to the superintendent the other day, and they are hoping that MSBA makes a decision in December. But she also cautioned me that there isn't a lot of requests this year, some got pushed off from last year, so the competition is fiercer, but so is our overcrowding situation is more difficult, so.
So I think, and I obviously don't want to have that conversation now, but at one point, is there going to have to be the conversation of if we as a municipality want to move forward without the support of MSBA due to the urgency?
Just, it's just, the actual impact is something that we'll have to talk about. I mean, it's critically, but it's also.
Right there under fire station, you're going to end up with folks saying, pick one, if you run it together.
Once we get an infrastructure bill passed at the federal level, that gives us money to do both. Fingers crossed.
Yeah, I'm going to win the lottery, as long as we're asking for things we don't have any control over, I would like to win the lottery.
So I have one more wildcard for Town Facilities, I talked about it before, I didn't include in my email, I'm sorry, was related to Old Town Hall, we had a fantastic presentation about some of the possibilities and ways that we can go through the education with the community. I'd love to have something in terms of a more focused vision for Town, Old Town Hall, as we go through the course of the next year. Obviously, that's going to require a flurry of, you know, community input, and feasibility, and understanding of what we can do at the site, and hearing recommendations from all of our internal experts, but I think having that as a marker would be great, just because of, you know, everything else we're doing for this area, that seems to just be the one thing that's staying stagnant, and it'd be great to have a plan.
One thing I'm looking forward to with new websites, Miguel, do polls and surveys, and gather information that way, get people to respond, help us gather that information that's easy to gather now.
Can we get stats from ClearGov about how many people access the application?
Probably.
That'd be cool.
But I don't, I'm still learning.
Our PR director could help with that.
Boom.
Our grant-funded PR director, grant-funded.
Well, you got to add that.
I did it, right there.
I think that does it for the list of items from our previous work plan, and the new proposals, was there any?
Can I just regroup with you after the meeting, maybe next week or so, over exactly what's staying and what's going, so I?
Sure.
Make sure that I update it correctly.
So can we move on?
Mm-hmm.
And I liked adding the participating in the work with the KP on diversity, I thought that was a nice idea.
Agenda item 10.
I move that the board approve five warrants for the period August 27th to September 14th, 2021, as printed on the agenda for this meeting.
For the second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And did we skip 10 minutes?
It's okay, I'm good.
Well, we skipped one. Oh, you know, oh, you know why, because I was looking at it here, I was just going here and it was empty, so then I skipped to this one. So apparently I skipped number nine, and.
Quite all right.
My friend, the hall monitor to my right, pointed it out to me. Four seven, hall, H, I am, hall monitor, do you have your pass? I, is there any, it's a tough crowd, is there any informational updates on topics in front of the town that the town administrator is going to update us on?
Just that we're moving forward with the fire station, we hope to bring that contract to you guys, we selected, the committee unanimously, unanimously selected Doran Whittier as the architect that they were going to negotiate with, so we're entering that phase. It really was a tough decision of the, of the five firms we talked to, and two in particular was very close, but we're excited that they're going to bring a lot of experience and, and guidance to the project, so.
What level of the, of the building project do you make sure that the folks who are doing the work are aware of things like ADA compliance? Is that architect, or is that?
As architect, yep.
Do we know that these people are up to snuff?
Yes, we'll make sure. The other thing is, we're just finishing up the, in years past, it's been a, you know, a raffle for the parking permits that we sell, but we have sold a few more for Liberty Lane, 20 so far of the 32, it's up from last year, and only about eight of Old Town Hall, but like last year, as the pandemic hopefully ebbs some more, and people maybe find out they're going back to the office in the, in the spring, you know, we're certainly open to, you know, selling them a prorated one at some point if they need it, so we have plenty available, but it's, the numbers out of the gate are slightly better than last year.
I'm surprised that MBTA hasn't undercut us at this point.
They're not organized enough to get it, right? Like, that would make too much, the amount of things that they, that aren't common sense about that organization, so that would make too much sense. But I'm just pleased to see it, like, I'm always surprised, still, because the ridership is still pretty, I mean, it's more than it was, but it's still pretty light, so that's it.
So the last motion that we have to make is to, I move that the board vote to approve the August 24th, 2021 regular meeting minutes.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I guess we have one more motion after that, right?
And just one last time, thank you to the Parade Committee, it was fabulous, really good.
Now we have someone from the Parade Committee on.
Donna, it was brilliant, we are very, very pleased, and really, thank you, thank you, thank you for all that energy, it really paid off.
And now, I have a motion to, oh, thumbs up, look at that. To adjourn, do we have that?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.